Everyone and welcome to the Bradenton City Council meeting Wednesday, June 12th, 2024, 8:30 a.m. in our City Hall council chambers. And thank goodness for the rain just starting out. But at this time, we'll have our invocation and pledge. We're going to ask Vice Mayor Barnaby to give us our invocation. If we can all stand, please.
Gracious God, as we come before you today to discuss important issues, we ask for your guidance and wisdom. You are the source of all knowledge and understanding. Therefore, we seek your direction in our decision-making process. Help us to listen to one another with open hearts and minds. We pray that you give us the discernment to make the best decisions for the greater good. And together, let the people say, amen.
And I would like to ask the great, the legend, Charles Clapsaddle to step forward and lead us in our pledge, if you wouldn't mind.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. And he has always been the man over the 25 years behind the camera. And he doesn't like the fame in front of the camera. I was at the event at, at the fair, sitting right behind him. And I really don't believe he knew he was going to get Citizen of the Year that year. And he was behind the camera. When they started talking, you could see him starting to fidget like, wait a minute, I think I know that guy. And but, but just a great celebration. So I will now call the meeting to order. Madam Clerk.
The first item on the agenda is a proclamation, Charles Clapsaddle Month, June 2024. Whereas longtime station manager Charles Clapsaddle has decided to retire after 25 years of providing an invaluable service to the citizens of Bradenton. Whereas Mr. Clapsaddle and METV, or Manatee Education Television, has a proven track record of broadcasting government meetings to keep our citizens informed. And whereas Mr. Clapsaddle has received numerous awards and honors, including the NAACP's Community Service Award, Manatee Chamber of Commerce Chairman's Award, the Manatee County Tourism Development Council's Tourism Ambassador Award, Sarasota Magazine's Unity Award, the Manatee County Foundation's Charles Clapsaddle Community Spotlight Award, and the Manatee County Distinguished Citizens Award. And whereas Charles has a passion for capturing stories and has produced seven documentaries on hard-hitting topics. He's an amazing storyteller and enjoys bringing our local stories to life for all residents. And whereas many government agencies and local organizations depend on the services provided by Mr. Clapsaddle and METV to document and record meetings, providing a historical reference for generations to come. And whereas, the city of Bradenton wishes heartfelt congratulations to Mr. Clapsaddle on his well-earned retirement. Best wishes towards your new adventure. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Jean Brown, as mayor of the city of Bradenton, Florida, do hereby proclaim June 2024 as Charles Clapsaddle Month, and urge all citizens to extend congratulations to Mr. Clapsaddle for his dedication to keeping our city informed and a friendly city for all to live, work, and play. Sign, Jean Brown, Mayor.
Hey, Charles, if you and your wife and your entourage want to come forward? Yeah. Yeah, come up, everybody come up. And then we'll, we'll do some things and get that and then we'll get some pictures. But I think there's probably going to be a few people that want to say something before we get to that point. So, so I'll let, anybody else want to say a quick word before any tears flow? She's getting the clean ass. Vice Mayor Barnaby.
Mr. Clapsaddle, we have known each other, I think, the entire time I was in office. And you have a gift. You have the ability to take people who are scared of that great big camera thing with that great big lens looking at you, and you make them feel comfortable. You've never embarrassed anyone. You've always made them feel that they were the most important thing on the planet when they were standing in front of that camera with you. That's a gift. It's not something everyone gets. For someone who grew up here, all the stories that you have saved for us so that our children and grandchildren can see them, that's another gift. And then Sue Clapsaddle, you gave us the gift of Charles. Because I know how much time he spent doing the thing that he loved to do. And you love Charles, so you supported him, encouraged him, and kept him going. And that was a gift to the community as well. So thank you both for the gifts, the many gifts that you've given us.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Ms. Barnaby.
Yes, Vice Mayor Barnaby said it quite well. And I just want to add that you've been a part of so much of our celebration and who we are. Now it'll be nice to have you on the other side when you can just have some fun. So I hope your retirement is full of many blessings. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Councilwoman Moore.
I just thought I would say, I'm sad that our time with me here is going to be short. But I, but I think that especially the documentaries, especially the ones with Judges Adams and Williams are just, you know, they're a legacy. You've captured our history, and I think that we all owe you a debt of gratitude for that.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Councilwoman Coachman.
Okay, I'm going to try. I've known of you before, counsel, most just as a citizen watching you work, and some as under the guise of teen court. But I've come to really know you, and it's all that I, I pretty much, it confirmed what I already knew. You're a great person. And your wife is wonderful to just, you know, be there behind you, not behind you, beside you, and, and allow you the time to do what you, you did so well. And now it is time to play and enjoy. And please do that. I don't want you to like fade into the woodwork or anything like that, but definitely enjoy and still be a part of, you know, what's going on that you, you've captured and filmed so much. And I'll just say ditto to all the things that Mary Ann would say, because if I go down memory lane, I'll really start crying. But what you did for my heritage, for, for the community, the black community. Okay. Thank you. And all the best.
Mr. Charles, so you and I probably met in about 1999, when I was very active in Boys and Girls Club stuff. And, and what you did to take me in, and, and again, I've said this a few times in this room and other places, I did not speak. I did not talk. I didn't want in front of the camera. I didn't want to be anywhere doing that. But what we knew we could do together to promote children's generational changes and, and the little parts of it at the beginning, that you helped me become, you know, who I am today and a better person, because getting up here and talking and, and I can't read a script, but I can sure talk and, and give that. And that's a tribute to the things that you've done. And then obviously, getting involved in government and what you've done to, to help that generational change in our community. Because people, you know, some of us do it live, some of us do it taped, but it gets out there. And that's the most important thing. And you're a business, but you never put it as a business. You put it where what's best for the community first. And, and that may be the great board members you have standing behind you that, that helped you push that forward and long-term board members. But without you, that wouldn't have been happening. And, and I'm just so proud to call you a friend. And, you know, the accolades are well-deserved. But the important part is, you know, who you have walking next to you. And, and I'm, I hope I'm, I know I'm as lucky as you to have that person next to you that behind the scenes, but willing to let you do those nighttimes and those events and, and change vacations and do things. And I think all of us up here are lucky to have those people in our lives. But, you know, especially now, and, you know, take that time. You're going to get bored probably, but, you know, you always have friends to come see and, and hang out with at times. But, but just thank you for what you've done. And again, you know, anytime that, that you want to come here and visit us, we're here. And, and we love you and we appreciate what you've done. And, and thank your board for allowing you to, to do what you've done and, and, and guide them in a way that's so special for us. Because we are such a small community. And I, I said this the other day at a, at a community, Manatee Community Foundation meeting with a group of us, that in collaboration, we are getting so much more done in this community than other communities. And we see things. And, and you were able to take it outside of that political part of it, because there's always going to be political drama. And, you know, we can agree and disagree at different times. But we know we want the information out to the public, and that's what you've made happen. So I could keep going, but I just appreciate what you've done. And I know our staff does. And I know all the council people before us and the mayors before us that were involved in it. So thank you, thank you, thank you. And we love you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you very much. And if I may, I just want to introduce these people behind me. It's my lovely wife, Sue. And, and you're exactly right. Nights, weekends, holidays, when METV came first, you know, she was so understanding. And I'm so appreciative of that. We're joined by Sherrod Halliburton, the president of our Board of Directors. And Sherrod has been, you know, just a stalwart member of METV for many, many years. And his leadership has really made a difference in how we've progressed from a little, small station to a station that actually does two counties now. And we're very proud of that. And joining him is Judge Adams and his lovely wife, Carol. And as you mentioned, Judge Williams worked on many of the documentaries with Judge Adams, and we're very proud. Won one and a, you know, a couple of awards. And we want to keep that kind of thing going. And if I may, I just want to say a few words. I want to thank you from the bottom of my heart for this honor. It, it's something that I didn't expect and I didn't anticipate. And each member here of the city council, I want to thank very much. You know, I've worked with some of you quite, quite a bit, some not so much. Mary Ann Barnaby, when I first came here, we started doing things with Mary Ann. When she used to do the Winter Wonderland, it was a wonderful event, family-oriented, and you've never seen a woman work harder than Mary Ann putting Winter Wonderland together. And we probably have more renditions of Mary Ann singing the National Anthem than anybody else, because we had that. But this council, I find, has worked efficiently, effectively, and with great cooperation. And that's what government is about, to work together. And watching you go through so much information is amazing. Everything from public works to infrastructure, you know, housing, this board works well together. We've been around and doing this since 2008, 16 years. We've never missed a meeting. We've never had issues that we can't fix and put on air. This goes on air the day that it actually, the meeting occurs. And we're very proud of that. We have a great team. I used to do all the Bradenton City meetings for years, because we didn't have that many staff. But we have a great staff now. Chris Dolan, William, and Logan in the back, they do a great job. And I don't get down here as much as I used to. And they deserve the recognition for the great job that they do. But I must say, your staff, sir, has been amazing. Tamara, Bill have been wonderful. Working with Mr. Perry has been terrific. You have a great staff. Your police department, Chief Bevins, you know, is a wonderful person, strong and, and cooperative and interested in the safety and security of citizens. And if I may, I just want to take a moment, sir, and talk to you. We have known each other since the Boys and Girls Club back in the day. And when you came on the city council, you were an effective council member. You were always there with the good questions. And, and you worked well with others. And again, that's a sign of good government. And as mayor, you lead an efficient and an effective board to get things done. And the citizens of Bradenton appreciate that. But it's not just what you do here for the city. As chairman of the MPO, which is a whole different setup, and that's more information, more decisions that you make every MPO meeting. And your leadership there is important. But you go beyond that. You're involved with nonprofits and organizations and make a big difference. Your work with making strides against breast cancer is to be applauded. You are a guest speaker at their kickoff. You attend all of their big events. And it's very important, because you're out there showing that you care, genuinely care about citizens. And for that, your RHP congratulates, sir. I'm very proud of what we've done at METV. And I'm very proud of working for the city of Bradenton. And I'll miss it, you know? Not the, you know, long meetings, but, you know, the, but I'll miss this, because we keep people informed. And again, from the bottom of my heart, I want to thank each and every one of you for this honor and this distinguished honor. A month is quite a long time, but I'm going to enjoy every day of it. The rest of the 19 days, I'm going to enjoy it. And I want to thank you, sir, for this great recognition. And it's deeply appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you. And we appreciate you. And you're always welcome here. So anytime you want to come. What we'll do is ask everybody to come around. I want to get around with you and get a picture, so we can memorialize that and have it forever. And we're all going to look at it. All right. and all the other things and going through it. So, Madam Clerk.
Our next proclamation is for World Elder Abuse Awareness Day, June 15th, 2024. Whereas city of Bradenton seniors are valued, contributing members of our society, and it's our collective responsibility to ensure they can age with dignity and peace of mind. Whereas 2024 marks the 19th anniversary of World Elder Abuse Awareness Day, and its recognition will foster a better understanding of abuse and neglect of older adults. And whereas, according to the FBI, elderly victims in the United States lost over $3.4 billion to scams in 2023. And as a result, the Bradenton Police Department is proudly taking an active role in education and investigative resources to stem this epidemic. And whereas, the city of Bradenton recognizes the importance of protecting our most vulnerable citizens, prioritizing the prevention of elder abuse, and raising awareness to create a better understanding of abuse and neglect of older adults and their rights. And whereas, eliminating abuse to older persons is a community responsibility. And the city of Bradenton urges all residents to join us in this global movement to promote a safer community for our elder citizens, so they can live their golden years with the security and dignity they deserve. And whereas, it is imperative to enhance efforts to prevent elder abuse, including financial exploitation, neglect, and other forms of mistreatment, by providing education, resources, and support to older adults and their caregivers. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Jean Brown, as mayor of the city of Bradenton, Florida, do hereby proclaim June 15th, 2024, as World Elder Abuse Awareness Day, and urge all citizens to recognize and celebrate older adults and their ongoing contributions to the success and vitality of our city. Sign, Jean Brown, Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you, counsel. I am Detective Jim Carrulla. This is my partner, Officer McNeil. Together, we make up Bradenton Police Department's Elder Fraud Unit. In April of this year, our chief saw that elder fraud was becoming a problem, not just here in the city, but in the state of Florida. We've started this unit, Officer McNeil will tell you about our stats. I'm going to hand out our prototype of our book.
Over the last six months, seniors have been scammed out over $2.5 million. And in the last two days, two seniors have lost, lost over $200,000 in scams. So what we do is we try to go out and pass out booklets during our presentations. We have been active in our community trying to educate seniors on frauds.
We have noticed that in the city, just in the last couple of months that we've started this unit, every single day, we have a senior coming to us that have lost their life savings or a huge chunk of it. It is an epidemic that is occurring, not just here in the city, but nationwide. Currently, we made an arrest on a subject who took a little over $1.5 million from a local resident here, and that was his life savings. And in, in that short time, every day, we receive calls from other detectives across this country asking how we're doing this, because they are in the same boat. This is an epidemic that people don't even see. And we're finding together that majority of these elderly people don't even report these, their crimes to their families or law enforcement, because they're so embarrassed. So we appreciate the acknowledgement, appreciate the proclamation. Thank you.
Well, I just, I just want to say too, that this is a collaboration in our county as well. There's different meetings. And, and I think we have kind of taken that quick lead, because we saw how it was and getting the two of you involved with some senior staff. But the sad part about this is not only do they lose their money, and a lot of times can't get it back, but they're embarrassed. And, and some of them are our elderly heroes that served our country as veterans and, and spent their life saving. And you've got these scammers and these bad people that are even taking advantage of them at the worst time, when they lost a loved one. And, and calling and scamming off of that. And I know that it's so important that we continue the education to say, hey, don't be embarrassed. And I know you're doing that. And I think that's why it was so important to, to do this, keep it going. And you know, we know it's been out there. But all of a sudden, it seems like it's ramping back up. And unfortunately, we all get things that, oh, that looks like it's real. And you click on it, and especially with social media, the way things are. And we just appreciate what, you know, the chief down and with you two taking that lead. Thank you very much. And, and it's got to be heartfelt every day when somebody calls. But if you're listening as a citizen and you've been scammed, please call, whether you live in the city or the county. But if you live in the county and can't get a hold, call us and we'll hook you up with the right people and that. So thank you for doing that. And, and I think this is an initiative that we really are going to, to hopefully, we're not going to stop it, but we're going to be able to slow it and help some people. Mr. Perry.
Mayor, I just want to echo what was said. You know, I started my, I started my career here locally in Pinellas County as Assistant State Attorney back in the late 80s and early 90s. And I can tell you that some of the cases I saw then regarding financial exploitation were just shocking to the conscience. And, and it was just amazing how people would try to exploit some of the most vulnerable populations. When I heard about this program, I was really excited for the, for the department, to see the chief put some of her top officers on it as well, Detective and Officer McNeil. And I looked over the booklet when it came in, and I'm like, yep, seen that, seen that, seen that. And I don't think people know how prolific it is. I don't think people understand how many vultures there are out there that will exploit that population. And you can fight violent crime and property crime and every other kind of crime, but you better fight this kind of crime too, particularly in the state of Florida. So I'm proud of what these, these folks are doing. I think it will really be a significant value added to our, our, our whole portfolio of crime prevention and, and crime, crime prosecution.
And it's also getting some state recognition a little bit so far by our Attorney General, Ashley Moody, is very interested. So, you know, we're the leaders and let's, let's keep doing that. It's because of you two, and really appreciate it. Vice Mayor Barnaby.
If we have groups that we think this booklet might be helpful for, do we just contact you all to, to get copies of it, or?
Yes, we set up appointments where we can go out and make these presentations. So of course, let us know, you know, where you-
That would be wonderful. I mean, I recently had a friend of mine who is a little bit older than me, get an email that they thought was legitimate from a friend of theirs, and they sent them money. And it was not. I mean, so they've gotten very sophisticated. It's not the greetings, I am a Nigerian prince looking to go back to my country kind of thing. It's very sophisticated. It looks like it comes from people you, you care about and that you know. And again, I, I was just like, how did you do that?
These criminals are getting much more high-tech. With the technology that is out there and with AI, they are using, well, where we used to see crime coming from foreign entities coming into America, and it was kind of obvious maybe due, due to misspelled words in an email or some, or a language barrier. These are Americans that are targeting our elderly. Make no word, understand that it is happening here. And that's what's making it so difficult, is because the seniors don't see it coming. They believe what they see.
Yeah, so I think, and, and one of the things, any HOA, anything that want to come out to in your wards, you know, just ask them and they'll show up and come out and talk, give the brochures. I know we've been, we were at Westminster not too long ago, and I think we're going to Freedom Village in the near future. So I think there's probably a lot more. But, you know, and the interest is there for- you know, and the interest is there, because they want to hear. And then I think what we're gonna find out as we go to these HOAs, you're gonna have some, well, two years ago, this happened to me, and they're embarrassed. You know, they've been professionals, and don't be embarrassed. Let's try to stop as much as we can, and maybe recoup some if it's possible. So, thank you. So, why don't we get everyone from the police department up here, for kind of that show of force in the picture? And we'll kind of stand up front, and we'll stand behind them, so we can get more people in the picture.
Brian, can you take everybody into the well?
Kind of get some on this other side.
Definitely should not be behind Captain Pierce.
Everybody at a 45-degree angle, tighten it up.
We got two more coming.
We got two more coming on this side. Everybody.
Let's go, make yourselves small.
Keep up the good work, thank you.
Thanks for working on the project.
Madam Clerk?
We do not have any presentations scheduled this morning.
All right, so at this point, we're at Citizen Comment. Citizen Comment will be accepted during the Citizen Comment portion of the meeting on any non-agenda items, agenda items, future agenda items, or topic of relevance to the city. Comments will be accepted on the public hearings at the appropriate time. So at this time, I have no cards. So, we'll move forward. Madam Clerk?
Item 6 is the consent agenda, and staff is requesting approval of items A through R.
So the chair will entertain a motion?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
I'd like to move for approval of the consent agenda, but remove items M and N for discussion purposes.
M, N, N. Is there a second?
Second.
Mayor, if I could be heard?
Yes.
I've had the opportunity to discuss the entirety of the consent agenda with each and every counselor, including Counselor Kramer, and have gotten feedback and tried to get additional information through the council as requested. And Counselor Barnaby and I did discuss items M and N, and I think it was thoughtful of her to talk about the significance of these particular items in the community.
Thank you. All right, no further discussion. We'll start the vote. In Ward 1?
Yes.
2?
Yes.
4?
Yes.
5?
Yes.
Carries 4 to 0. Vice Mayor Barnaby?
Okay, Mr. Chairman, item M and item N are dealing with our wastewater treatment plant and the clarifier, as well as the sludge lagoons. And I know that these are two items that have been of great importance to all of us up here, as well as our citizens. And I thought it would be prudent for us to at least share what this work is, and, you know, that we recognize and have been working on the issues over at the water treatment plant. But I want everyone to know exactly what we're doing, and when we're gonna do it.
All right, so is-
I'll take a stab at that, Mayor.
I would say something real quick before you start, too, is I just want people to realize, if you drive by there now, you see a lot of vehicles and construction going on. And, you know, even with some of the other things that are out there, the waterkeepers and that, a lot of those projects were planned well before all of that, because you don't get something that happens, and then the next day, the equipment shows up. It takes months, if not years, to plan some of this. So, we have been planning on this for quite a while, and it's sometimes things happen that are out of our control. And I really think that when you're looking at it, and when you get to talk to someone about that, and they go, oh, yeah, that makes sense. But, you know, in this construction world, it's not, it breaks, they're there tomorrow to fix it. This has been something that's been going on for years, that has been in a process planned. And our staff is doing a great job, obviously with our new Public Works Director and Assistant Director. They're working diligently to get things done, and understand, and set us up for the future. So, that's what I know so far. Mr. Perry?
Thank you, Mayor. It's a good point you make, as far as the history of item M, which is a significant expenditure of about $16 million. When I first got here in 2021, Mr. McClellan was in the process of retaining Jones Edmonds Engineering as a consulting engineer to look at the capacity and condition of the wastewater treatment and reclamation facility. What that facility does is takes in millions of gallons, basically, on average about 6 to 7 million gallons per day. And it reclaims and treats the water through a three-step process, basically. This is for a particular part of the process being clarifier 4. Out of that water that's reclaimed, we send about 2/3 of it to Purple Pipe redistribution for irrigation purposes to Braden River, and points east, basically, is where most of our Purple Pipe goes. The rest of it is treated, and it's all treated, and the treated water, we have a DEP permit to put it back into the river, what we can't sell and reuse. And we're looking at all that. But Jones Edmonds looked at it in 2021, and said that the clarifier needed expansion and rebuilt and replacement, basically, as a priority item. We expected cost at that time, going into 2022, Jim and I's discussion, at about, and Kim, about $8 million. That's what we thought a new clarifier would cost. We put it out on the street for our P purposes and pricing, and it came back in at $14 million. And we said, something must be wrong, that cost has gone up that much. So, we closed out that RFP, did not award it, put it back out in the street. And as you see in attachment to the item, we got three bids back in, 21.6 million, 19.6 million, and 15.9 million. So it even went up beyond what we thought, in the additional nine months, I think it took. That all being said, we are in the position now where SRF has already approved funding for this, through their Construction Resiliency Loan Program. Ultimately, there was a contract award to Poole and Kent that was already approved by counsel for this plant. It's basically underway. And that, right now, this is the finalization of the SRF funding, basically, that will borrow that money. It's under construction, as you pointed out. When you look at the clarifier 4 itself, it is part of an overall system, just one single part. There's a whole totality. But what I can tell you is I'm very excited, and I think the Public Works Department is very positive, that we are really looking at our infrastructure, and looking at capacity, both for today and tomorrow, how we environmentally, we protect the environment, and the sensitivities of that. As you know, the Waterkeeper's lawsuit is near and dear to us. I always say, we're all conservationists, we're all environmentalists. Nobody wants to put contaminated, you know, substances into rivers or anyplace else, and the like. So, it's really important, and I applaud counsel that has supported that, both through the process of voting, as well as their level of interest. You know, what the people don't see is the long meetings we have in my office, or your office, or Public Works, and with staff, you know, where we're trying to educate you on fairly technical things, and you all are policymakers, and we're trying to, you know, sometimes advocate, sometimes get feedback on what you all want to do as a matter of policy to address these very significant, high-cost, you know, infrastructure, core infrastructure issues. And that's a complicated process, that someone can come up and public comment, and make a little bit of a, you know, comment on everything else. But I think the complexity is sometimes underappreciated. But I think our balance is really good, that we recognize the importance of our aging infrastructure, as it relates to our utility obligations, for both, all of our utilities, whether it's stormwater, and what to do to protect the Clean Water Act that regulates the MS4 permit, or whether it's sanitary sewer, or whether it's drinking water. Those are very large undertakings. And we have a great staff, and it's just getting better and better. And we're getting smarter and smarter, more sophisticated in how to deal with it. And we're making up some things from the past, that us, the city of Bradenton, like most cities, are always trying to play a little bit of catch-up on certain things. And we're also trying to stay ahead of the eight ball. So, I'm pretty proud of what we've been able to do. And as you said, when you go by there, this is not Uncle Joe from Kokomo with a pickup truck. These are large, large, heavy civil construction projects. And you see a yard full of valves that are the size of the podium, or, you know, that kind of thing, and the holes in the ground, and heavy, heavy equipment. So between this particular project and item N, which is a sludge lagoon, that I won't get into what technically that does, I think we're going in the right direction. I know there's significant investments, but they're investments that need to be made.
And they're long-term investments-
Hugely long-term.
-that are gonna set us up for the moment, and for the future, while still looking at as much resiliency projects that we can do, when in the day, it was figured to put pump stations as close to the river as you can, and now our goal is to get them off of the river, and also handle all of the additional situations that were happening. And I think you bring up a good point quite often, Mr. Perry, with this rain we've just had. You know, the INI that is out there, and that's what, something people don't realize, if we didn't have the INI, our system works well. But the INI is when the rainwater seeps into the pipes, because the pipes aren't closed-circuit type thing, and that adds water to it, and it overwhelms the system. And that's what we're trying to, lining the system, as well as, without digging up our whole city. Because in the old days, you'd dig up the city. Now, you can do it from the manholes and that. So I think this plays into that, but also plays into setting up for the future with the, you know, we're gonna have growth, we're gonna have some situations where we're gonna have to adjust things. But those adjustments need to be made anyway, and for the future of our downtown, our east, our west. We don't have much north, but our south of the parts that we do have, because we mostly run east and west. And I think that we're gonna see that what this council is doing to set things up, and still being very fiscally responsible. Ms. Barnaby, anything else, or?
No, sir. At this point in time, I'd like to move for approval of items M and N on the consent agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Gutman, thank you. Any further comment? Hearing none. We'll start the vote in Ward 2?
Yes.
4?
Yes.
5?
Yes.
And 1?
Yes.
Thank you. Carries 4 to 0. Madam Clerk?
Item 7A is the first reading for Ordinance 4040, an ordinance of the city of Bradenton, Florida, vacating a portion of a platted 40-foot-wide right-of-way, as shown on the plat of Adams Annex to Bradenton subdivision, recorded in Book 1, page 158 of the Public Records of Manatee County, Florida, and more particularly described herein, being generally located south of Manatee Avenue West, east of 3rd Street West, north of 8th Avenue Drive West, and west of 2nd Street West, providing for recordation in the official records, providing for severability, providing for repeal of ordinances in conflict, and providing for an effective date. And the second reading and public hearing for Ordinance 4040 is scheduled for July 24th.
All right. So we'll have that second reading on July 24th. Moving on?
Item 7B is the first reading for Ordinance 4041, an ordinance of the city of Bradenton, Florida, vacating a portion of a platted 60-foot-wide right-of-way, as shown on the plat of Roches subdivision, recorded in Book 1, page 142 of the Public Records of Manatee County, Florida, and more particularly described herein, being generally located south of Manatee Avenue West, east of 2nd Street West, north of 8th Avenue Drive West, and west of 1st Street, providing for recordation in the official records, providing for severability, and providing for repeal of ordinances in conflict, and providing for an effective date. And the second reading and public hearing for Ordinance 4041 is also scheduled for July 24th.
Okay.
Item 7C is the first reading for Ordinance 4042, an ordinance of the city of Bradenton, Florida, vacating a portion of a platted 15-foot-wide alley, as shown on the plat of Roches subdivision, recorded in Book 1, page 142 of the Public Records of Manatee County, Florida, and more particularly described herein, being generally located south of Manatee Avenue West, east of 3rd Street West, north of 8th Avenue Drive West, and west of 2nd Street West, providing for recordation in the official records, providing for severability, providing for repeal of ordinances in conflict, and providing for an effective date. And the second reading and public hearing for Ordinance 4042 is also scheduled for July 24th.
Thank you.
Item 7D is the first reading for Ordinance 4046, an ordinance of the city of Bradenton, Florida, vacating an 8-foot-wide portion of 8th Avenue West or South Street, as shown on the plat of Black Bear Park subdivision, recorded in Book 1, page 283 of the Public Records of Manatee County, Florida, and more particularly described herein, being generally located south of Manatee Avenue West, east of 3rd Street West, north of 8th Avenue Drive West, and west of 2nd Street West, providing for recordation in the official records, providing for severability, providing for repeal of ordinances in conflict, and providing for an effective date. And the second reading and public hearing for Ordinance 4046 is also scheduled for July 24th.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
All right, moving forward, new business. Mr. Perry?
Mayor, Counsel? Mr. Mayor, Counsel, I wanted to talk about two projects that are under the new business agenda items. And these involve, basically, City Park. I think the depiction that's shown on the monitor is an overhead of the City Park area itself. And as we're familiar with what's been described as City Park, it really runs from 9th Street as a western boundary, all the way past Braden Village into 1st Street 301, bounded also to the north by 13th Avenue, and to the south by 17th Avenue. It's a very large piece of property. The baseball facility itself, LeCom, sitting on the southwest corner, of course, is historic, and has played a significant role in Bradenton's history, and cultural, and sports, and historical value, and the like. But we've looked at this facility, this area, this area of town, having much more potential. Its proximity to Village of the Arts, its neighboring communities, both to the north, the south, the east, as challenged, underserved populations, its position next to Rogers Garden Elementary School, and a host of other economic opportunities on the 9th Street corridor, all the way to the 14th Street corridor, where we see a lot of affordable housing going on, and redevelopment in that area. So, it's a very, it's a very important area of interest. What we want to do is look at master planning, and we're considering that, basically, under item A. So what is proposed is really two scopes of work, under two separate contracts. They are both with Applied Sciences. Applied Sciences is an engineering planning firm that has done a lot of work locally. We have them on a continuing services contract. We bought in three different firms that are on continuing services, that do this kind of work. All of them were excellent. We interviewed them, we asked for proposals as far as how we would approach the City Park project. And when we talked about the City Park project, we talked about it beyond the thought of just sports tourism, and the development of potential economic- just sports tourism and the development of potential economic opportunities, recreational opportunities, open space park opportunities. We talked about what else could we do holistically when we were looking at community redevelopment of the surrounding areas and the surrounding issues in those areas. And I think Applied Scientists was very close, um, to what our ideas and our thoughts were a- as it related to the opportunities to more holistically approach this. And what they basically kind of came up with is some ideas on what they'd have to do first, which is master planning, and then secondly, because it is such a s- large, large area, the concept of, uh, starting with the horizontal underground engineering. And, and when I say underground engineering, I'm talking about stormwater, because, um, there's a variety of different schematic systems that run out of the Village of the Arts, which of course is west of the, the rectangular area, and they run through, um, the, the contained Thirteenth to Seventeenth Avenue area at various points into a conveyance that basically takes them to an outfall into the river. There's a ver- there's a lot of underground engineering as far as stormwater.
Mr. Perry, I'm gonna interrupt you for one minute. We're gonna take a two-minute reset.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
In the state of Florida, in the city that the county runs. So that's a collaboration that is in GT Bray. This will be another park that somebody else will basically manage and run, that will get the benefits out of it. And you see the two parking lots, and that's why I wanted this picture a little bit better. So you see it. We have a choice, and as we go forward, they'll do the stormwater on to operate where it will not have the issues that in those neighborhoods that they've had. Village of the Arts has done great because it kind of filters over to here. But to do the stormwater that will not only help the city park part of it, it will also help, help the Bradenton Village part, the big green spot on the right, which is something that they're looking to put affordable homes in, that the residents of that neighborhood can purchase now and start to change the generational wealth, not just to be in a rental place, they'll be able to have a home. And that's something that is a little farther down the road, but we're setting that up to succeed. And historically now with Rogers Gardens, right in the middle of it, being one of the worst performing schools in Manatee County School District, and the Title I school, there's opportunity to make that the best performing school in the city. And I think with, when you put these services around it, you put what the, the community center around it and what can change it, it, it's going to dynamically, generationally change. And yesterday's county commission meeting, they were talking about their seventy-three, seventy-five million dollars worth of ARPA money. And how, you know, because they've got deadline, we all have deadlines coming, December. Got to spend it by twenty-twenty-six, the end of December there. And what that money has generationally had the opportunity to change, and we were in that with the Lee Com Park, two point five million. And federally, we're asking for more money. The PAL Sheriff's Office is asking for more money to put into it. So, you know, it's something that if we are truly wanting to change a neighborhood, while also getting some of the fun stuff, you know, an opportunity for twelve months a year to engage that area. Right across the street, I know there's opportunity for possibly to some redevelopment towards the, the west of the park that's being driven right now through some, some other adventures that are out there, hotel, retail, different things that are wanting to be there now. And we got people wanting to come in and make a difference. So, you know, as we know, it's not just a six-week baseball stadium. It's going to be a twelve-month-a-year generational-changing community asset that could make the opportunity for some three- and four-year-olds to have that, you know, value of going to a better school and also, you know, an opportunity to succeed. So, you know, it's just something, and that's why I wanted to see this. And you see the B on the field, you know, on the new field. That is actually the design that they came up with, that is the design of PNC Park in Pittsburgh. The exact wall. On Saturday, they had the Roberto Clemente Day, and Roberto Clemente's sons were in town.
That's right.
And the wall that he hit the home run over will be there in the right field. So again, symbolically celebrating the Pittsburgh Pirates and the fifty-six years here in, in Bradenton, which is, is not the longest, it's one of the longest in Major League Baseball relationships, but can play where the pros play, as Mr. Perry would say. And you'd have a hundred teams in Manatee County playing at IMG, playing at all the parks. But on that championship night, they're going to be in downtown Bradenton. So that's, that's what we want to go and, and really engage that area in a positive economic and social way. Yes, ma'am, Ms. Coachman.
May I?
Yes, ma'am.
This is in my neck of the woods.
Yes.
I am pleased to hear that we are still also focusing on that community and how it can be revitalized. It, it's very, very warm feeling, knowing that we're not only going to bring economic development to the city through the sports and entertainment, we're also going to lift the lives of the surrounding area. I get flutters because I know what this can do. And, and commu-, and, and concentrating on the community is really vital. And I appreciate that as a city and as a council that we are focusing on that. Have a question, though. South of Seventeenth.
South of Seventeenth?
Yeah, of course, that's not part of this plan, but is, is it going to benefit from?
It, it actually is part of, this is the schematics of this area. What's, what's there. But south, which is along from Ninth to First, is where some of our other businesses are, and there's some businesses in there that want to revitalize there and really make it kind of a entertainment-type district. We have, we haven't hidden that we've been working with Turning Points
Yeah.
on how we're with a plan to grow Turning Points in a way that can benefit the services that they do. Because Turning Points does get blamed a lot for the, the homelessness. And really, they are not a homelessness service. They are more of, they help homeless, but I think that the other day in the meeting, it said eighty-seven percent of the people they serve aren't homeless right now.
Right.
They're on the verge of homelessness. But, so, working with the county and other partners with Fresh Start Manatee, with Tunnels for Towers that has a groundbreaking on Saturday, with, trying to, there's two or three others, oh, the, the, with the Salvation Army and the county doing their building at the old substation, under one roof. When all of these services start to hit in the next couple of years, some sooner than later, that, that will give Turning Points an opportunity to focus, I think, more. And hopefully, we can work in an area where the county has some property, move them, have them be part of things, and change Seventeenth, which then grows exponentially. Because a lot of the businesses on Seventeenth are struggling because of that.
Yeah.
And so that's, that is in the conversation.
And Turning Points, you're right, their, their, their focus is not necessarily just homeless. It's working with people to prevent them from becoming homeless. But one of the, I, I, one of the, 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 the problems, and I hate to really refer to it as a problem because these people have needs, because of what it does provide, it does generate people who are homeless. And when they turn off the lights and lock the doors and close their fence, the people are still in that area. So I'm happy that we're really looking at how to, how to benefit and help everyone.
And there may be some CRA opportunity with that building in the future for a lot of different opportunities to help to find a positive impact for Turning Points to grow in a different location.
In a different location and help more.
Help more, right. And that's it, again, we met with Kathleen Kramer, their board chair and their board vice chair the other day, to, to tell them that we're not, tell them to run out of town.
Right.
We're trying to figure solutions so they can serve more in a way that helps. We had Commissioner Van Austinbridge and Administrator Bishop there. So it was a, a good meeting to say, okay, we, we totally believe in your services. How can we help you, you know, grow it in a positive way while still allowing our city to have opportunity to grow in that area? And, and again, we have support of the namesake on the building, we have, it's, it's a great collaboration. But if we just did from that side of Seventeenth north, it wouldn't work.
That's why.
And so there's a lot of, lot of things that are going on, and it's a lot of moving parts. And as you and I've talked, and, and I've talked a lot in these meetings, I'm not a guy that's going to sit on this and say, let's, let's do studies and let's wait. And then three years, four years, five years. I know there's some strategic planning we have to do, but we have to get this going. We're talking nine months for this study, and I believe we're already a little behind the eight ball because we were hoping to have it done by the end of the year. This may do it with these, the reason that these guys were hired is because of their connections with Swift Mud and could help us get some, because I was in on all three of the meetings. And they see the vision of from the, the north, the south, the east and the west of this property. Because the west obviously plays so much into Village of the Arts.
Yeah.
The east plays into Bradenton Village and even maybe Thirteenth Avenue property. Because more's going on, more can happen. And then north, for all of those families and those young people that can see something in a positive way. And to the south, right along there, maybe some urban, I mean, some development of entertainment. But also, even a little farther south, is some of the homes that need some positive, not just the negative. But again, that's the global part of it. But, you know, it's one of those things, and this is one that I think you can say, if we build it, they will come, you know, and there's a big show about a baseball field and a cornfield like that. And I think this is our cornfield right now.
And, and I, I love the idea that baseball is, is going to be promoted more in the area. And it will bring, I mean, right now, we're, we're, we're approaching the month celebration of the Nine Devils. And, you know, it's so appropriate to even, you know, to be thinking of these kinds of things because it can bring baseball back to the community where it was such a strong, it, it, it had a strong impact back in the day, and it can come back. That just really gets me when I think about that. I mean, even the National League now is recognizing the players of the Negro League, you know, and that's monumental. And all of this is just a, a great time.
And I think you look at, right in about the middle of that picture, you see a roadway where the, the parking lots are to the left, and then the school, the school playground area, and PAL, and then the green space in Bradenton Village, which we know Bradenton Village is going through, and a rad rehab area now after twenty-plus years. That is the area that, that excites me the most of, the impact we can change generationally for families and especially the kids. Because to see that impact. And, and, you know, without Tropicana property, this doesn't happen. Without this, that doesn't happen. So it's kind of one of those things that, the, the snowball is happening. And that's why Mr. Perry and I talked about bringing this, not because we didn't think we probably could have approved this, but we wanted it out there for the collaboration of that. And, you know, it, it falls under some monetary limits, but that's not what it's about. It's about the future of a three-year-old that can have a future.
I appreciate, I appreciate us indulging on the time. I know that this is.
Yeah, we're, we're good.
We've had some really good conversations, Councilwoman Coachman, as well as every counselor myself, about the, the entirety of benefits of this kind of project from the community to the economics and the like. And, you know, I, I think that area, I've only been here three years, but I, I can tell that historically, it's been a little bit, you know, probably undeserved and neglected. And it, it's not a whole lot different than what I tell my, my daughter and my son. Turn the lights on. I, I go, you can't work on an engine if you can't see the smaller parts of it. When you start shining light on something like we're doing here and saying, let's look at it, and let's look closely at it, and how to fix it, and you keep a bright light, you see better. Sometimes my wife is playing with stuff and it's dark. Turn the lights on, you know, get light on it. And I think that's kind of euphemistically what we're doing with the whole totality of it. And we have great economic opportunities to support because some of our partners are seeing that, too. And when you look at what we talked about before as far as utility work, now, community redevelopment work with our partners at CRA and our state partners and everything else, and then the vertical construction, the police stations and fire stations, good stuff.
Vice Mayor Barnaby.
Okay.
Councilwoman Booker.
Yeah, in addition to all of this, I mean, it's, I think it's great, but I think there's really an opportunity here. I was really impressed being on the Estuary Board. Sarasota redid their golf course and basically turned the golf course into a stormwater project. And I think this is a great opportunity, especially as Mr. Perry said, there's, you know, major stormwater that goes to the river. So this is a, this is going to be a great, and that'll help with the neighborhoods, too. You, you see a lot of green here, and that what's going on underneath the scenes could be a great, you know, step in the right direction with stormwater management. And I don't know what our, what our status is on the Tampa Bay Regional Planning Council, not, I'm sorry, the Tampa Bay Estuary Board. But I know there was a significant grant that came from the Sarasota Bay Estuary Board for that golf course. And so I'd really like to see us look into that, because there might be some great opportunity. Exact, well, because it's the river, it's probably going to have to be the Tampa Bay.
Right, but it still flows under our parts that are.
Exactly.
In the Sarasota Bay, too, so we try.
Okay, okay.
Lance, can you put that on your schedule? Vice Mayor Barnaby.
I am very excited about this. I remember back in the nineteen nineties and the flooding issues that we had, particularly with Rogers Gardens in that area. I shared with Mr. Perry, because if you've got Ninth here and you go down three or four more blocks there, my great-grandfather owned a lot of that. Lost it because he couldn't pay the taxes, but he had a lot of that, and it was always a low area. He, he was, he was a farmer. There was crops grown, there were pigs grown, and, and down where there's now a, I think it's a storage place. Those of us that have been here will remember when it was the old drive-in movie place. That was always a wetland, and that's where my great-grandfather always kept the pigs. So it's historically had a problem with flooding, I guess is what I'm trying to say.
It's better now.
And let's get this once and for all taken care of.
So just to that, Vice Mayor Barnaby, last night, my wife and I went out to dinner after we had spent some time at a very nice event. And I said to her, I said, turn down this road, go down that road, because it had just poured down rain. Because we went by the old mall, coming down Ninth, going north. And I wanted to see with our new paving on there, and I know some of the stormwater things we've already done a little bit to the north to help Village of the Arts. We drove through there and drove through Village of the Arts, and there was no water standing. So where, if I believe, if I would have went there five years ago, ten years ago, there was times, the sandbags stayed on those businesses twenty-four, seven, three sixty-five. Because they knew if, when they left every night in the summer, they put the sandbags on their doors. And they're not there now because we haven't had that. And we had, we saw Main Street and Three Oh One last night, and I know some of us were looking at it and others were commenting and saying, where is this? But it was Sarasota, not our Main Street. And I don't know, we've got somebody in the audience, and I didn't get to Main Street before it stopped. But we've had some of those in the past where our local Main Street businesses had some issues. And we had, I don't know if we say we want to solve them a hundred percent, but we've mitigated them quite a bit. And some of that was, you know, again, the tide is the tide is the tide, and we can't control that. But we just hope everything's flowing well and staging well. And I think some of that is happening. But we continue to do projects like this, it's only going to improve it.
Well, that onsite retention is designed to do that.
The microphone.
Yes, sir.
Councilwoman Moore.
Just a few comments. The, to the point about the stormwater, I am happy to hear that it's going to benefit the surrounding areas because I think when we had our one-on-one, I wasn't totally positive that it was going to do that. But if that, if applied science is going to focus on that, I think that that is just really an exciting extra bonus. And to the point about whether or not we can get funding for it, I see that Alana Todd from the Tampa Bay Planning, Regional Planning Council is here. And I was going to ask her to, if you would not mind during my word comments, to her speak briefly to a couple of opportunities that she has shared with me and that I have in turn shared with Mr. Perry and Mr. Williams and the Colonel and Ms. Colinandra. So there is, I think, a lot of opportunity for us to be able to get funding in particular for that, and that's those surrounding areas. I, I'm excited about the project, particularly in light of the collaboration. I think it is worth noting in regards to funding that it is a collaboration so that the citizens don't think that we're just putting all of our eggs in one basket and that that's how we're prioritizing, you know, I want to make it clear that we are receiving funds from different sources, not just ourselves, and that it ranges from the school board, the county, the state, the federal government, and grants and whatnot. To the point about Seventeenth Street South, I just, this kind of speaks to a point that I was going to raise in my word comments, which is, I re, I know that, I know summer is hard because people are traveling, but I really think that I would like to see us have a workshop regarding moving forward with staff doing some kind of strategic planning, for us to really analyze what we want to see as far as the downtown and then the surrounding areas. I would like us to hone in on what our goals are there, because that's news to me, that we're having meeting, you know, that, that Turning Points is potentially going to be relocated or whatnot. That collaboration is not something that I'm very intimately familiar with. And so I think a workshop is really the only way for us to identify what we want to do, where we want to see things, so that we can be a little bit more pointed when we're approving projects and discussing projects, so we have an idea and we can direct staff in that regard with the technical assistance. So I would just like to see us more generally look to maybe putting something late summer, early fall, so that we could have a more targeted discussion about how we want to just move forward with developing, redeveloping and activating spaces in our effort to have a more robust downtown and, and support for the surrounding communities. So that's pretty much it. But I mean, I think the project is exciting, and I can't wait to see how it turns out. And that's pretty much it.
No, and I, I can answer a couple of things to that. That is in the works right now. We've had to get, because we've, we've asked to get with their board because we, they will need to do board approval, we'll need to do board approval on some things. You'll need to do some CRA board approval if some of the things come to fruition. But, but that's part of it. And, and again, as we know in government, sometimes you got to get the, the cart before the horse, and then the horse catches up. And, and I think that's an opportunity to do that. Because until the Tropicana property became reality, nothing else mattered. But we've had to keep that going. And with the Tropicana property now, I think we can do some of those and, and we plan on some of that. And I, and I, I am very much about strategic planning and looking forward. I just don't want things to slow down on some of it, but also looking at some of the opportunities to strategically plan north, southeast, and west. But now you've got the catalyst that could really do that for long term. So appreciate that.
If I could just address some of those comments. First off, we'll be moving into budget season, which we're already in, of course, and be doing some workshops for budget that we typically do. But I, I'm a believer in, in the strategic planning as well. One of the problems is, is that it's, it's hard to, like, land the plane to do the strategic plan while, while you're flying it, still have to get to the destination. So you have to be able to do that, which, which we can. I think when you talk about strategic planning, we're dealing with the visioning, the project right now that, that will get some feedback from the community on, on what some specific localized area, regional types of things are as far as needs and, and wants and interest of the community. That'll be helpful. I think that you're going to hear from, at a strategic, a strategic planning seminar or workshop from Public Works to tell you the condition of their infrastructure and what they see their needs are going to be now, ten years from now, twenty, thirty years from now. I think you're going to hear from different folks in the economic development community as far as the same thing. And I think it's, it'll be a good start, but it's very difficult to define the parameters of, of, of really what we have for a strategic plan. I look at it more from the perspective of capital commitment. And it becomes complicated because we have certain funds that we know are dedicated to utilities in our enterprise world. We have certain funds that we know are dedicated towards city kind of general fund-type activities, policing, public safety. This particular project, we were blessed, frankly, City Park, with a collaboration of funding partners that I had no idea three years ago, and I don't think anybody else did, that we would be able to get that type of interest. And I think one of the reasons why is because it's leveraging different types of partners and, and, and objectives as it relates to the betterment of people in underserved communities, as it relates to economic development, as it relates to everything else surrounding it. So some of it, I guess, you can put on the, the board and say, we want to move in this direction. And we have funding sources that we should commit to that, and particularly in our utilities. Some of it is going to be dependent on economic conditions, and some of it is going to be, be dependent on good fortune, I mean, a certain level. So there's, there's a value in it, but, but realize, it can only get you so far.
Right, and we're, we're, you know, we, the planning department is working with STANTEC.
Yep.
We're working to get that.
Visioning, yes, ma'am.
And, and, you know, we've done all of those meetings and everything. So I think, I, we're, we're getting closer to where I think we want to be as far as coming up with specific goals and objectives.
It's a good point you're making. I mean, the more we do this, the more we're kind of honing it down to those things. We get, we have the, the STANTEC visioning study, as you pointed out. And of course, that's necessary for our comp plan as, as well. But it also helps us kind of look at a longer-term plan of localized areas in the community, not just downtown, not just City Park, not just the east side.
Well, City Park, and this is one of the things that we've heard before us, really, we're not going to get any money for baseball. This isn't a baseball park. It looks like a baseball park. This is a community generational change to the city of Bradenton that not only stays in the boundaries of Ninth, Thirteenth, Seventeenth, and to the east, close to First or Bradenton Village. This is exponentially going to go wow. And the visioning part of things will help, you know, some strategic planning things might help. But to, to say that we just got to start from ground zero and go, I don't think that's what you're saying. I think you're just saying, okay, what are some of the things that we look at and say, okay, this is going to help? Because we know Village of the Arts strategically could have two hundred and fifty businesses. They have about seventy or eighty, I believe, and the rest of it has struggled for twenty years. And, and that's where the CRA has a huge opportunity with the catalyst right in the middle of it. And we've struggled with that now for four years, you know, and I was one of it on the board. So, but, you know, it's, it's very difficult because strategically planning on that, when, when that property was bought, we absolutely do not want a parking lot. Now, all of a sudden, it seems like they might want a parking lot because it'll strategically help the businesses on the night. So it's tough, you know, so that's where we're going to have to really figure out, you know, some of the other surrounding areas. So now there, we're, we're planning on, again, till we got the Tropicana property two weeks ago under contract, it was, you know, because we had to, really been hard to find somewhere else to move. Now we have that opportunity, and how fast? You know, I don't want to go too fast that it hurts things, but also, we've been talking about this now for three years. And there's another, well, a long time, but I'm saying, since we've been here, most of us have been here, three and a half years. So, but this looks, this is a, it, it's there, it's going. Now we've got that next step. And it's, it's so community-oriented, you know, with all of the partners, as well as I heard last night, that, or yesterday afternoon, that there is a lot of private partners that want to jump in on this now. And I think that's a great opportunity because that's private money, you know, as, as Vice Mayor Barnaby said a while back. Sometimes the public will do something good and the private will follow, well.
Private money follows public money.
Yeah, and it's, this is, this is becoming something that, you know, let's take advantage while we can and who we can help.
I agree with that.
I appreciate the comment, so Mr. Perry, you're asking for a motion to approve.
I'm asking for a motion to utilize Applied Sciences Continuing Services Contract and approve the expenditure for a development. and approve the expenditure for Development Services for two things, the City Park Master Plan and the City Park Engineering.
Ms. Coachman.
Proposal.
Second.
All right, we have a motion in a second. We've had a lot of discussion. Start the vote in Ward Four.
Yes.
Five.
Yes.
One.
Yes.
Two.
Yes.
Approved, four to zero. Thank you, Mr. Perry. And I think that was well worth the open discussion and opportunity for people to see, and I appreciate you indulging me for the extra two minutes to get that picture up, because I think that picture really showed, and I just got that yesterday late and I forgot to send it to you. So, moving forward.
The other item under new business is Item B, which is the Bradenton Police Headquarters Water Line Relocation to Stormwater Installation Work Assigned Expenditures to Gator Grading and, and paving. And so, what this is, is that basically, we of course have our water tower one that is in, right next to this, the site location, and we have to relocate a fairly large size transmission line. And we also have storm water that's existing that we have to relocate as well. We did a carve out to take this out of the, the CMARS contract. They could do this work, basically, but because we are kind of behind, not behind, but, but we need to do this as a precursor to any significant site improvement, we thought we would best be able to do this by contracting it ourselves. And so, this is a proposal to do just that. Again, this vast majority of it is for the water line work, but there is some storm water work in there as well. The cost is approximately six hundred and ninety thousand dollars. It is fluctuating because there is some things we might be able to do to save money, like removing the fence that is around the water tower, which of course, we would be charged for if we had a contractor do it. So, we're trying to, to cut that down, but the total contract as is is six hundred and ninety thousand dollars. And that'll be necessary, again, to get the water positioned in the right location so that we can put the building and its surrounding structures in the locations we, we, we would think it would be best suited. There are some form code issues that try to move it forward, and that's kind of where the line would have to be in front of so we can access its services. We surely can't have a large supply transmission line like that, that has a high speed pump under a building, because if you had to service it, you'd be in a bad way, and that kind of thing. So, I'm asking for approval to do that, basically.
Any questions? And I know you've probably talked with everybody about it previously.
Yes, some, yes, sir.
Yeah, yeah. So, Chair, entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the work assignment expenditure for the water line relocation and the storm water work at the new Bradenton Police Department Headquarters using, utilizing the Piggyback Contract PB dash two-three dash double oh seven KC.
Second.
Second, all right, thank you. Any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll start the vote in Ward Five.
Yes.
One.
Yes.
Two.
Yes.
Four.
One, yes.
Carrie's four to zero. Thank you, Mr. Perry.
Thank you all. Nothing further from the administration.
All right, Madam Clerk.
There's nothing under unfinished business today.
All right, Council reports, we're going to start in Ward One.
Okay. Okay.
Uh, just a couple of things. The heat is on, so everybody, please be safe out there. I mean, it has been pretty much, almost intolerable. And to that vein, I know we're getting a little behind with solid waste pickup, and I would implore everyone to have a little understanding, because the temperatures on the, the trucks is unbearable for people. And so, you know, maybe us being a little more conscious about making sure everything's in their proper cans might help things work more efficiently, and if we could just all have a little bit of patience and kindness on their behalf. The heat is also, and I am not directing this towards this body here, but the heat's on for the political season right now. And some of the rhetoric that I've been hearing in some of the things, just, it really does not reflect the friendly city and/or county. And I just would ask for everyone to please remember, not everybody's taking it quite as passionately. And they, I, I as a realtor bring people in from out of the state, and this is their first introduction. So, just remember, we want to reflect that we're the friendly city. We all care about a lot of issues and candidates, but let's, let's keep it civil.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Barnaby.
And to that, I say amen. I find it increasingly frustrating when people are discussing issues, discussing things that are going on, may not understand or be aware that, you know, in the state of Florida, people have property rights. And if they are developing the property that they've owned according to the comprehensive plan of either the city or the county, you, to vote against it and to stop them from developing the property that they may have owned for generations is opening the taxpayers up to a fabulous lawsuit. And cash and prizes can be the developers if you do that. So, to constantly be told that we're all sitting here waiting for the developers to come up here and throw cash at us, I find, again, frustrating, disrespectful. And, the entire time I have been up here, maybe I'm not doing it right, but I've never been offered anything. Not that I want anybody to offer me anything, I just want to try to serve my hometown, our community to the best of our abilities. And I think that's what everyone up here wants to do. So, getting back to the business at hand, we have had an ongoing project on Riverview Boulevard that has taken a very long time. And we are slowly but surely getting towards the end of that. And again, as Ms. Coker's asked people for patience, I'm going to ask people for patience as well. I know it's frustrating if you see the people down at one end of the street don't have the water in front of your house, but you're having water seep up from the river in front of your house, and it impacts when you can leave your, your driveway. I, I get that, I understand that. I live in the neighborhood too. I don't live on the water, but I live in the neighborhood too. And I know that it impacts everyone that, that wants to, to drive down Riverview Boulevard. And we are working on it. We are working to get a project done that we think is going to eliminate at least eighty percent of the flooding. Now, there's going to be more that we're going to have to do. I've noticed in the time that I have been here, and let's not talk about how long that was, but the water is coming up, the, the river is rising, and it's coming over the seawall, and we're going to have to address that. And that's going to be time consuming as well. And, it's not going to be a McDonald's solution. You're not going to get it in twenty minutes with change back from your dollar. So, I bring that up just to say that we are working to get that project finished as expeditiously as possible. And again, I appreciate everyone's understanding with that. One more thing. Somebody up here had a birthday. And it wasn't me, but it was our mayor. So, if you will please join in with me. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, Mayor Brown. Happy birthday to you.
And many more.
Thank you.
That is my council report.
I'm going to go to Councilwoman Coachman now.
Out of order.
Well, I figured, Councilwoman Moore has somebody she wants to come up and talk.
Oh, that's right. Okay, okay, okay. All right, well, I was trying to get ready, because there was, there's quite a bit, I want to say. Oh, and happy anniversary, too. Because, what, thirty?
Thirty-five years.
Five years. It's awesome. Um, okay, there were just some things I wanted to mention, because we're not going to have a meeting again until July the twenty-fourth. And there's a whole lot going on between now and then. First of all, I'll say Happy Father's Day to all those who assume that role. And lots of things are coming up, June, Juneteenth. It's our annual celebration to recognize when the entire United States, well, I guess at that time, it wasn't all fifty, but anyway, we all became free people. And it made it, made its way all the way to Texas, finally. So, Juneteenth is a very important day to celebrate, and Dr. Sharon Jefferson, along with a team of people, always put together a celebration festival, and it will be on June twenty-second, from two to seven PM. It's always hot, very, very hot. They're even starting it later in the day to, to in some way, you know, help with being able to, to bear the heat. There are sessions of different things going on, listening to some guest authors, such as Ruth Duvall of Where Are the Butterflies? This is hosted by Bat City Comics. That will be nine to eleven forty-five, and that's at nine twenty-five Manatee Avenue East in Bradenton. And I have the flyer, so we could probably put it on the city's website, so others can go back. And then, there's a session two from one-thirty to three, and the young people are like this. It's hip hop rhythmic reading with author Vincent Taylor and Cornbread. This gentleman comes every year, and the kids just love it. And this is hosted at, by the Thirteenth Avenue Dream Center, which is nine twenty-two, Twenty-Fourth Street East. And the community festival itself is Saturday, I already said that, from two to seven, June twenty-second. So, there is a flyer, and we will put this on the city website. And it's, it's always a great time. It's hot, but it's a great time to celebrate Juneteenth. And there was something else. Also, between the next time we meet on July twelfth, the Bradenton Nine Devils Tribute Night occurs at Lee Combe Field. It is sponsored, of course, by the Pittsburgh Pirates and the Bradenton Marauders. Yours truly is supposed to throw the. I need to go, I need to go and practice. So, th- this is July twelfth, twenty-twenty-four, of course, and it's, gates open at five-thirty. The game will start at six-thirty, so I'm assuming between five-thirty and that time will be, you know, some, some, some activities going on to, to at least recognize the Bradenton Nine Devils. And just have a great night. And the Marauders actually have, they have a great deal. It's like a fifteen-dollar deal, and you get the hat. Obviously, you get into the game in.
Get a hot dog.
And a hot dog.
The only thing I'll say is, because I had that same thing, I think they have to be groups ahead of time.
To get that.
It's not just, yeah, so that's.
It's got to be pre-registered on the site.
Exactly. And just so you know, I did not bounce.
Yeah, I think you need to clarify. Because I think what you're saying is.
The first pitch.
You threw your pitch, you made it all the way to the plate.
I did.
You made it all the way to Marty.
Okay.
And Marty was standing how many inches close?
He was in the dirt.
He was on the dirt. You were on the grass.
I don't think so.
Well, if you can do it, I can do it. I'll do it. All right, and so, and so those things I definitely wanted to, to, to bring forth. And it, it's just great. We had some great discussion. Vice Mayor Barnaby, I'm glad you pulled those two things for discussion, you know? I think I'm, I, I was a little amiss, because I didn't pull some of the things to, to bring attention to, and that was some of the ship funds and what they're doing.
I thought the same.
So, get ready, y'all, because when they start bringing those on Consent Agenda, I'm going to pull them, because I think they need to be discussed. And I think the citizens need to know that we are really helping in, in, in lifting areas, you know, people who need that, that extra help to have a quality of life. So, get ready. I'll be pulling those.
I think it would be a wonderful thing to have, once, once the projects are completed, to ask our ship staff to come in and show, this is what it was, this is what we've done.
Because they really, since, since I've been here, I, I know things have really ramped up. And they're, they're using those funds to help some people. I mean, when I first came in, there were people calling me, because ten years ago or twenty years ago, the city had promised to do some things, but then criteria changed, and then those things weren't completed. And now, it's like we're working together to try to get those things completed. So, it's, they need recognition, I feel. So, and other than that, I, I'll just stop talking and just say Ward Five is alive.
Thank you. Ms. Moore.
Okay, to that point, I just wanted to specifically thank you all for the Consent Agenda items that are the sidewalks that are in Ward Four. I didn't pull it, because I, you know, obviously, I was excited that we were doing it. But, I do appreciate everybody being supportive like that. I mean, to Mr. Clap Saddle's point, I do find us to be cordial and cognizant of how important it is when projects are happening in our own area. Because the, when you're the most local government, those are your neighbors, those are people that really know you, and they want to see things happening in their own neighborhood, of course, and you want to advocate for that. But obviously, collectively, for the good of the city, we have to support each other's projects. So, I thank you for the sidewalks. I'm excited about that. I'm also excited about the Elder Abuse Task Force with the Police Department, and I do intend to ask Officer McNeil and Detective Corullo to potentially schedule some, some meetings with some of my, I know I've got two or three pockets that are primarily retirement age and could benefit from that. So, I think that's a fantastic community outreach opportunity. And then, last but not least, I see that Ms. Todd is in the audience. I'm sorry to put you on the spot, but specifically, she has emailed about two opportunities that I think are important enough, significant enough, that I would like for you all to hear about them. So, if you are willing. I'm thinking specifically about the collaboration with the National Fish and, yep, and then the opportunity with, is it Jillian?
Jillian, yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Welcome.
Thank you so much. My name's Alana Todd. I'm the Principal Environmental Planner with the Tampa Bay Regional Planning Council.
Thank you.
I appreciate this opportunity to speak in front of you all. So, as Councilwoman Moore alluded to, we have two opportunities for collaboration right now with the city of Bradenton. One, right now, we have a fellow with, through the National Academy Science and Policy Fellowship Program. She's with us through the end of August, and she's currently completing her PhD in Environmental Engineering. She's passed the PE exam, and her focus is on storm water. And so, she's looking to get some more experience and hands-on, you know, project. And so, I reached out to you all, hoping that maybe you have a project where she can lend some technical assistance to, and so, I'm hoping she can get involved.
You see those two right there?
I do. I'm hoping that you can stay for a few minutes, so I can introduce you to them.
Yes, I love that.
Someone will trip you if you try to leave.
Well, she's from Bradenton, and so, we're really excited to get her involved. And hopefully, you know, through, before the end of August, she can.
About tomorrow.
She's ready, she's ready, and I'm sure she'll be excited to see this. So, that is one, and then the other, and I, I think I mentioned this the last time I came up and spoke, but we are currently applying for different grants to develop a coastal master plan for the Tampa Bay region, and so, that will help us to go in and do some really comprehensive compound flood modeling, identify where those most at-risk areas are throughout our entire region. And then, we'll be identifying regional scale flood reduction projects, both structural and non-structural. And we hope we can tie in nature-based features as much as possible, and so, that will be a four-year project. And we've already applied to NOAA for two million dollars, and we just were invited to. and we just were invited to apply with NIFW, the National Fish and Wildlife Foundation.
Say who NOAA is, please, because I don't want someone thinking there's an arc in our future.
NOAA is, um, gosh, it's the National Oceanic, yep, and Atmospheric Administration. Right. Yes, it's a long one, yeah. Um, and then we're, so we're applying now for another $2 million um, with the, the National Fish and Wildlife Foundation. Um, and so hopefully, one of those two or both work out, um, and then we can go start this four-year project. But we're hoping to get the city of Bradenton on board with that as we have many other municipalities and county governments already on board. And so I think Manatee is, and, and so hopefully Bradenton joins us, and we get a letter of support from you before next Friday would be great, um, because it's due the following week. So those are two really great opportunities that we're really excited to partner with you on.
So send me an email to my email, and then we can write the letter and, and do it, so.
Wonderful.
Huh, yeah.
Get it taken care of.
Taken care of by next Friday.
Great. Well, thank you so much for your support.
Absolutely.
All right.
Thank you.
And thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
Yep, I think, oh, you know what? I was just going to make one other thing, quick thing. Um, to Councilwoman Coker's point about the heat, I know people are frustrated with, um, some, with some waste pickup. But I just wanted to note that when I reflected that frustration that I had heard about to, um, uh, to Mr. Williams, I think it was in particular, he mentioned that, I don't think Mr. Cho is here, but that, I think it's notable, maybe people should know, that we, what we are struggling with are heat conditions, so that, I think he said that last week, so correct me if I'm wrong, please, but that Mr. Cho said that last week, I think we had eight, um, staff members that suffered from some element of a physical problem with the heat. Uh, and I know that I'm suffering with the heat, so I don't doubt that it's, you know, rough to be out there dealing with that at this time of year. Um, so I thought it was noteworthy just to let everyone know that, you know, we're doing the best we can, but it is a physical, you know, we've got to make sure our people are safe and not getting hurt.
And if I may, just also just chime in on that. When the heat index reaches a certain level, pardon me, it's, um, it is unbearable to be on that hot pavement, on that hot truck. And, um, so I do hope that the, the citizens will, you know, take that into their thoughts, because there was a time when I don't think we recognized that. And, and, uh, we had staff passing out. I have a family member that used to do that. And, um, it was common to pass out because of the heat, and it, and you suffer some serious harm. So I do hope that the citizens of Bradenton take that into consideration. Um, and yes, it might be some delays, but.
Okay, thank you. Um, well, first off, I didn't, don't really have this on my list, but I'd just like to thank, obviously, our staff of, of every day, what they do, and, and the positiveness throughout the, the city now, and just really where everybody's coming in and excited to make the citizens have a better life. And then, obviously, some of the things that, talking about with the yard waste is difficult, you know? And we don't want to see that they, it's behind. But, but obviously with the heat and the weather and the rain now, you know, we're not going to complain about the rain, but that's going to slow us up as well. But also this council, um, the civility and the, the, you know, we can agree to disagree sometimes, but we also can, can work together in getting things done for the long-term future of the city, and that's important to me. Um, so a couple of things just to go over real quick. Um, downtown, we're working on some great opportunities that, um, you know, our CRA has done such a great job with some grants and different things and up in that, which is all that sit around me here. So we appreciate that, and with Mr. Burton's leadership and his staff doing that, we're really working to, to fine-tune some of the looks and the way we do things. And we're working on some of the safety issues downtown. And some, you're going to see some, I think, some exciting things coming more and more with our downtown. Um, Water Taxi, TDC meeting on Monday. TDC approved going to the county, obviously, the last meeting, to ask for a bigger boat, a boat that can run more. Um, it's a, just almost a hundred-person enclosed boat, air-conditioned, and with the success of the Water Taxi so far. I got people calling me, hey, Mr. Mayor, do you know how to get on that thing? I've, I've looked, and it's booked for the next three months. You know, and, and, and I'm like, I'm in the same boat, because we want to get on it, too. But, um, no, there's no way to get on unless you really book it up. And then unfortunately, there's been, they figure, I think it was 25,000 cars that have not been taken off the road because they've had to cancel days because the pontoon boats don't operate. They figured 44,000 cars have been taken off the road for the transportation of the people going out to the island, um, to Anna Marie Island and Bradenton Beach. Um, we're very hopeful that we will have a landing point soon in Holmes Beach as well as Coquina Beach. Um, so it is that successful, and they, they did promise that there will not be a Monday holiday that they're closed anymore. Because Memorial Day would have been a great day to be open, and they missed that. But now, on holidays, they will be open, um, weather-related. The new boat, they figured out of those 44 days that were canceled, they would probably be able to operate 80 to 90% of those days. There's going to be some days the weather just isn't going to be able, but, but they'll be able to do that. Um, this boat will be something that can also take employees out there. So they will work with the restaurants and the businesses on the island to transport them where it will be no cost to the worker, where they can get out. You figured if we can figure 100 to 150 workers a day that can get on a boat, it takes them 20 minutes to get there from downtown Bradenton. Um, you know, they can get there, do it, and it will be, you know, everybody's like, well, how, to go at this time? No. They'll work out a situation where it'll work. So it's, you know, it's not about not having it happen. It's about figuring out what meets, do they do a private 7 o'clock run? So for workers. And then maybe there's a 3 o'clock to come home, and then, and it brings the other ones back. And so I just think it's opportunity and the success. Mr. Faucioun says that, that he's having people all over the country call him, asking about it because of the success of it. And then at our MPO meeting, it was discussed with Sarasota County. They don't necessarily want to reinvent the wheel there. They just want to jump on board with us. So you can go from downtown Bradenton, Anna Marie Island, Holmes Beach, Bradenton Beach, Coquina, St. Armond Circle, downtown Sarasota. So think about that, if that can happen over the next 12 to 24 months, where you have it. The benefit to getting this other boat, um, that the county would purchase with TDC money, it's no taxpayer money, it's all the terrorist development money, that once they get that boat, um, and they're already starting now that it's been approved by the county commission, that they will apply for a grant that will pay for 85% of a duplicate second boat. So, uh, one of my thoughts was, and as a TDC member, was, okay, we get this second boat virtually from the grant, but also then Sarasota wants to get on board. Well, you know, they got to help purchase, you know, that first boat we did. So then it does help offset the cost of the operations and everything. And Sarasota City and County is very excited. And, and we're lucky we have that waterway that's there, you know? And, and I would love to be able to, to get on the boat in 20 to 45 minutes, depending if it's how direct it is, is to be eating in St. Armond Circle. Because trying to find a parking place in St. Armond Circle at any time, much less at a nice dinnertime. And, and we would love for people that are staying in St. Armond Circle to come to downtown Bradenton. So it's really something that, you know, for 30-plus years, didn't happen. And with this council and with that county commission and the TDC members and others have really done something great, so.
May I?
Can I comment on that, too?
Sure.
I would like to, too.
I, I just want to thank you, because there were a lot of naysayers when this project started, and it took the tenacity of you, of yourself and people at the county and the TDC to follow through with this. Um, I think it's, um, I, I'm just glad that it went forward. That sometimes everybody's afraid of change, but sometimes, um, you know, people just need to let us see it through.
Yeah, I appreciate it. Ms. Moore?
I was just going to comment that we were giggling because I was in our one-on-one. I was expressing to him that I have a 16-year-old that is this summer working on the island. And so we've been having to drive him out there because he is actually getting his license as we, he may have it, maybe.
Maybe now.
Fingers crossed.
Thanks for the warning.
Right now, I know, yes, Matthew Moore is on the road. Uh, hopefully, maybe. Um, but, um, uh, so I, it had been a while since I had seen what it was like to go back and forth from the island. Um, and I would love to put him on the ferry and let him go that way instead of driving for the first time in that traffic.
I laugh about that part of it, but that is huge.
But it's serious, yes. He was late his first day freaking out completely.
But, but that would be where, you know, and then, you know, somebody said, oh, because there is the naysayers, they say, oh, well, what if it rains and the boat can't run? Well, Manatee, that's, it's a MCAT division. They would make sure that they would run a bus out there, do something with opportunity, because, you know, there is weather that comes up that might not be expected. But let's talk about the 99% of the time that it's positive, not the 1% that could happen. And, and that's what, and so I just think that this is such an opportunity to say why we're different and what we can do to make it. And it's happening. It's, it's proven fact now. They're, they're talking about maybe at certain times, being a Monday-through-Sunday runs. And if it, with the new boat, it can be, because it's literally a 20-minute ride. But I think a lot of the people now like that 30 to 40 minutes, because it's relaxing. And now that you're going to be in an inside, air-conditioned, and, you know, one of the things that, that I pushed from the first day was Wi-Fi on the boats. Because they, they said they've never done that before. Well, that was because we know, if you can entertain your kids or yourself while you're sitting there, that 20, 30 minutes seems like five minutes.
Then that's relaxing.
And with the, with the workers, I just think that, that could be something that can transitionalize, you know, hundreds of cars a day.
Mm-hmm. And to your point about success, I will also mention and share that some of the businesses, um, on, on Main Street have shared with me that they've, uh, some of the retail have actually changed some of the products that they carry based on what they're hearing, that they're, they get a steady stream of people from the ferry, and it's wel- very well-received.
And I don't know, I, I think one of the things, when this building comes online in a few years and the different retail that could be here, and that, I don't know that we're getting a lot of people riding from the beach to here yet, but they're parking here, have the time, so, and then riding to the beach, so why not shop at the shops? So we are getting some retail from that. But in the future, when it does run all the way around, then also runs, you know, with across the river, you know? People think that Bradenton and Palmetto don't always be, uh, good collaborations. We have a great collaboration with Mayor Bryant and look forward to future collaborations with the next mayor in Palmetto. But, um, with that convention center and hotel opening up, I've already heard of a convention that wants to come there that has about 400 rooms, and they only have about 252. So all the rest will want to be over with us, and then the Water Taxi can take them back and forth across the river. And that's where the new boat will take the island stuff. The small boat will be a hopper. So, you know, creating opportunity because of one thing turns into the next, and that, so. So the Water Taxi is, 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 again, thank you all for that support and what we had to do there and, um, going through that hurricane season, just be ready. You know, I mean, we, we've, most of us have lived it our whole life, you know? And, and we all get lazy, but just be ready. And, you know, hopefully, if we're ready, and all that water I bought, if it, drink it during the year, it is what it is. Um, July 3rd, as we know, the Marauders had made a deal with the minor league, Single A, that they will always have a July 3rd game, even if it's kind of their mixture because of the fireworks. They're willing to do the fireworks. But also at 5:30, we're going to have a mayor's hot dog eating contest, sponsored with, and I'm not eating them. We've got 20 people, hopefully, who signed up. Uh, but to support the Bradenton Blues Foundation and, uh, try to really get something. And, and it's going to be exciting, because we do have a sponsor that is, first prize will be $300, second prize $200, third prize $100, whoever can eat the most hot dogs.
And all the tums you can use.
And then I did see some sad news today. Joey Chestnut signed with some fake hot dog company, and now he can't eat in a Nathan's Hot Dog. Come, come to Bradenton on July 3rd at 5:30. And the, the stuff will be blasted out on our websites, um, soon. The brochure is almost ready. But, you know, in conjunction with the Marauders and the Pittsburgh Pirates, and really to try to draw something in the fireworks that they do is always great. So that'll be fun. And then our, finally, our, kind of our last event of the year for our, for our year, the way things go, um, is July 4th, um, the celebration. Uh, last year, we, we've always had July 4th fireworks that we do with Palmetto and Manatee County, and they do it off the Green Bridge. But last year, there basically was a downtown celebration without having a celebration, and people were looking something to do. So one of our events that we added in this year with our group is a July 4th, but they have moved it to Rossi Park. Originally, it was going to be on Main Street. So, because then you'll be able to sit there and watch the fireworks right from Rossi Park, and we think that's going to be a good move, while still working to have, you know, everybody's heard this, I'm an events guy. So we had five this year, six with Winter Wonderland. And even though Mrs. Barnaby hasn't given that up, she's allowing, realized Bradenton to do it and helps her with it.
Realized Braden is doing it, and they graciously allow me to participate with them.
Which is, without, without you, though, it would not even have happened, but, over the years. But, um, so that's going to be exciting, July 3rd and 4th coming up, because we don't have a meeting, like Coachman said, until after. But those are the exciting things that are happening and to celebrate our country and all that happens, so. Um, and, and again, we, we fixed up Rossi Park to use Rossi Park, and it's, it's working. It really is nice. And, and again, that was another one of my bucket list things when I became mayor, and I appreciate this council supporting that and coming up some more options that Mr. Williams will bring up at the right time for the budget to continue to improve Rossi Park opportunity for the looks. So he smiles, but, but, um, other than that, just enjoy the next several weeks, and we'll, your city staff and all of us will keep working and, and, uh, thank you for all that you do. So I appreciate that. And we, we going today to look about the De Soto Bridge replacement at the Chamber. So, um, our meeting did get done a lot quicker, so we won't have to rush or come back. So we appreciate that.
Oh, we have a 4 o'clock CRA meeting, sweetie pie.
Well, you don't have to rush to get back. Um, department heads, anything special? Anything? Mr. Perry?
No, sir.
Nothing? All right. All right, well, for the good of the order, we'll be adjourned.